Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the planning and highways committee on this day of 30th of June 2016. Just a few light housekeeping rules. Hopefully, we won't have a fire drill or a fire, but if it does go off, please leave the building the way you came in. If that way is blocked, use the rear entrance and be careful how you access the steps into car park. And under no circumstances use the lift. And can I remind everyone to put their muggles on silent or off, please? Item one on the agenda, apologies for absence and declaration of substitute members.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have received apologies from councillor Honeyman and councillor Lambert and councillor Campbell subbing for councillor Lambert today.
Item two, disclosure of interest. To deal with any disclosure by members of any disclosure of pecuniary interests and all trusts of them pecuniary interests as defined under the C4 Town Council Code of Conduct and Localism Act 2011 in relation to matters on the agenda. Item three, public participation. In accordance with standing order three and C4 Town Council policy, members of the public will be entitled to speak on general issues concerning this committee on non-planning application matters at this point. People wishing to speak on planning applications, they do so immediately before each planning application. Any notes of public vote? Thank you. Item four, planning applications, weekend in the 3rd of June. LW stroke 16 stroke 0139 Vale End to Vale Road. Any members of the public like to comment? Welcome to the committee, councillor Low. I went and had a look at this and then...
You can go straight through it then. I'm going to go to the faceboard now.
Right. Thank you very much. Sorry councillor Low. No, just looking at this wall, I mean obviously it was damaged by a vehicle at some point. It needs to be made safe, so I can't see anything. Is that fine, second?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. The heritage statement also was quite clear on this. I approve this. No problem with it. So I'll like second.
It's also nicely using the original plans as well. Can I have the show of hands with no objection, please? LW stroke 16 stroke 0384 21 Sutton Park Road. Councillor Lewis there?
Yes, this, I feel is rather a subtle application because the original application was for a change of use from hotel to multi-occupancy generous, whatever that might mean. And now we've been asked him to take it a stage further to a temporary emergency bed and breakfast accommodation. Now I wonder how we would have felt if it had been from hotel to this emergency bed and breakfast accommodation. Would we have felt as sympathetic to it? But I don't really see we've got any grounds to object unfortunately.
Councillor Layton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can only count eight bedrooms and yet it says up to 15 residents. And I don't know whether the planning laws allow for multiple occupancy, you know, I just wonder whether that was an issue. It seems to be overcrowding in the context of too many bodies for the space available. And I'm not okay with that particular regulation which would put a bit of that. Of course, they might be couples, in which case that's fine, but on the other hand, they might not, in which case I presume they might object to that.
I've had reason over the years to deal with people that have had their homes sold from under them because they can't pay the mortgage and stuff. The last one was two grown-ups, man and wife, and three children. And they had to be put into a room and see accommodation until they was going to the council or what's the name now, social house. And that's happened a couple of times over the last few years.
Well, you've had two or three in a room.
That's right, yeah. Like three children, you know, same fact.
It's the same chat, but if I may, with this issue of this, basically, there is nowhere else equal to the end space. If west coast is not completed, then some of this gets into the law, so I think it should be approved.
Councillor Low? I agree, I mean, there's obviously a need for this temporary accommodation. I think it does come under multi-occupancy, I don't think it's something different, but I understand there was a brief, what did stipulate eight, but now they're obviously being put in mortgage again, but I don't think it's that, I wouldn't object. Is somebody going to...
Oh, you're not objecting.
Sorry?
Oh, you're not objecting.
Your second, no. So can I have show of hands, no objection, please? LW stroke 16 stroke 0406 15 Beacon Road. Councillor Lewis there?
It's a very large site, it's just a very small increase in the area of the extension at the rear, so I see no objection to that at all.
Yes, I have had a look at that one and I think it will be done quite decently and, you know, keep with the surroundings. I don't see how there would be any objection to that. Would you like to propose that one?
Your second there?
Second there.
Your second there. Anybody else? Can I have five hands with no objection, please? LW, oh sorry, weekend in, can I have, okay, wait a minute, planning applications, weekend in the 10th of June. LW stroke 16 stroke 0227 94 North Way. Councillor Lewis there?
It's a corner site. I was a bit worried about the building line, but having examined the plans, it's clearly inside the building line. But it is on a corner, it does restrict visibility a little on that corner, but it is an estate and people shouldn't be speeding, so no objection.
Councillor Layton?
No objection, subject to the point made in the heritage statement regarding archaeology, which was that if it's necessary for foundations to be greater than a meter, then some archaeological work is required, but subject to that, I'd have no objection.
It's a simple story, so it's not going to...
Depends on the substrate, probably true.
Are you, Councillor Lewis, you propose no objection, you're happy with the comment?
Yeah.
Councillor Layton? Okay. So can I have a show of hands of no objection, subject to the archaeology comments? LW stroke 16 stroke 0308 9 East Albany Way. Councillor Low? It's quite an ambitious scheme this, but it is a large site and the house is very well set back from the road, so there's certainly room to do it. My only worry was that they're taking out the front of the wall and at the moment, that is holding up a steep bank and a hedge and a tree, which are all going, so providing we don't really object to that, I can't see that we can object to the scheme. They have justified that, to say the least.
So you're replacing a profile?
Yes, exactly. It will actually alter the whole look, the whole premises, but I think, I have no objection. Going to second, third, so no objection?
Yes.
Well, councillor, so can I have a show of hands with no objection, please? Thank you. LW stroke 16 stroke 0386 47 Upper Chinton Gardens. Councillor Lewis there?
It's basically taking away a conservatory and replacing it with a brick extension, so perfectly acceptable, I feel.
Find a second there. Councillor Low there? Okay. Can I have a show of hands with no objection, please? LW stroke 16 stroke 0410 89 Orfiston Road.
Well, I mean, they've got space to build and again, you know, I see no objection to it. It seems to be a perfectly good extension.
Councillor Low?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes, I agree with that. The number 85, I think it is, it might be, is of a similar width that's proposed, occupies the whole width of the site and the president's been set there for, I think it's a steady detach, isn't it, from the ground, but no objection.
No, show of hands with no objection, please? All right, planning applications, weekend in the 18th of June. LW stroke 16 stroke 0443 53 Farm Close. Councillor Layton?
No objection to this, Madam Chair, it's a pitch roof and I'm a great fan of pitch roofs and I wouldn't object to it. I was a bit worried when I saw new windows with the side elevations, but having looked at the plans, they are clear stories, windows, so you'd have to stand on chairs to overlook your neighbour, so yes, no objection.
Can I have a show of hands with no objection? Thank you. LW stroke 16 stroke 0456 4 Freeland Close, Bishopstone. Councillor Layton?
I've no objection to this in principle, Madam Chair, apart from the fact that county archaeologists, not an archaeology in here tonight, the county archaeologists made the point that as a condition of planning, there's a programme of archaeological work that's required, so subject to that programme being carried out, I thought it was a significant proposal.
Councillor Lewis there?
It increases the area of the sculpture, but I think in the end, it gives a much better layout to the actual property, so from that point of view, I think it's a good development.
All right, so no objection, subject to the archaeology comments?
Yeah, the county archaeologists stated that a programme of archaeological work is a condition of planning concerned. It appeared from the application that the work hadn't yet been undertaken.
Just avoid, I couldn't find a planning notice anywhere. No, I think we had a couple in the last planning meeting that didn't have notices outside the premises, so I don't know, that's something we ought to have made, because I did say... No planning notices displayed. Might have got blown away. No cases displayed, I'll add that one, so. So can I have a show of hands, no objection, but with the two lovely comments? Are you...
No, sorry.
No, that's you, no, that's so good.
I'll move on to the next item.
Right, tree works. TW stroke 16 stroke 0058 stroke TPO, Popcock, Onefell Road. We've got no comments on this?
No comment.
No objection? Find a second there. Councillor Campbell? And can I have a show of hands with no objection, please? TW stroke 16 stroke 0059 stroke TPO, Four Farm Close. No comments?
The reason stated is they want them reduced to that height so that they would avoid hitting the house in event of them being blown down. These rolled trees. Are we allowed to ask the tree inspector for his opinion or... I don't see we can give a decision on that one, maybe without him...
I don't know, I'm not sure if there's enough grounds for a tree to be reduced so drastically.
These are old established trees, mining Chinton Lane.
Can we say subject to a tree, or is it a tree?
Does it want to be detrimental to the tree?
I agree.
So no objection in principle, but councillor Low?
It seems to me that maybe we should ask the tree ward to look at it the other way around, the tree officer, insofar as if there's an imminent risk of the trees being blown down, then the height should be reduced, but in the absence of risk, then we should leave well alone.
Yes, usually if it's diseased or...
Yes, and it needs to be assessed, I agree, it needs to be assessed by the tree officer. And then if there's no problem with the trees, then I would have thought, there's no reason to reduce the height, is there?
Right, so you're agreeing that? So in theory, we're objecting, aren't we?
Yes.
Unless there's evidence of them...
Yeah, unless there's, I can't get my words together, I'm objecting unless there's evidence of the tree. So that's councillor Layton's proposal, the second one, that's the last second, can I have a show of hands? Thank you. TW stroke 16 stroke 0061 stroke TPO, Five Kingston Avenue. This one is actually, a lot of it's leaning over the footpath at a low level, isn't it?
I think it's a reasonable application, isn't it? I think it's a reasonable application.
We need to...
So you're proposing no objection?
Yes.
On second, councillors, can I have a show of hands, no objection? Here's my cap. Item five, page four, update report. Councillor Layton?
I was very concerned when I saw this because three of the applications, significant applications we've objected to in the past have now been approved, and so our objections would be overturned. We spend a lot of time, well actually some personal money, reviewing these applications. It seems to me that while, you know, an extension, changing a conservatory from wood to brick or, you know, a small extension to a house, fine, Lewes on the whole would agree with those, but every time there's a significant application such as these, where it seems that the officers in Lewes or the committee have had discussions with the developers before we see the application, our objections seem to be overturned, and I think that's getting to an unreasonable situation now. And I think it's with the Newlands development just around the corner, where I know for a fact, there've been several meetings with the developers and we've yet to see any plans. By the time we see the plans, we've put all the work in and it will be too late to make any changes and our suggestions, unless they're positive, will be overturned. If they're sort of aesthetic and in the interest of CAF, chances are they'll be overturned. And so I think we've got to the stage now, councillor McCadham was talking the other week about the amount of time and effort and money that we spend personally on all these applications and we don't even receive expenses. If we're wasting our time on this committee, then the committee is redundant or should be restructured with different terms of reference. So I think the time has come, Madam Chair, with your permission, to take this up formally in Lewes and to see whether or not some, I don't know, some changes can be made so that our presence and activities are more worthwhile, otherwise I agree with, it's an unfortunate offence and Adam McRae's not here tonight, but I agree with his problems a few weeks ago, the problems he raised a few weeks ago. He's very conscientious and spends about 12 hours every time, is it, at the meeting, going through the plans. You know, if we're wasting our time, then we can do something else instead.
I think, I agree with you actually, because it's been a long guy, it's been many a year. And, I mean, basically, we are consultants and that's as far as it goes, but yet we know our area and it is disheartening because especially now that we haven't got paper copies, it is taking a lot of time. There's a lot of people's time going in and you just wonder what they're doing it for, basically. So, yeah, I think, I think some of it, all of it, some of it's up to MDC could also come up at the planning training next week. We could raise it then and...
And with, I'll improve tomorrow perhaps?
Yes. I think I hope so.
Just quickly, I mean, it is frustrating, however, if they're within the bounds of the law, then there's no, there is much to be objected to, I mean, you know, you can't just have it our way, I know it's frustrating, but you've got to remember, if these plans are submitted and they are lawful in what they're deemed to be, then there's no objection and it's only fair that Lewes approves. I know, you know, I've got the advice and, you know, unfortunately, you have to look at each thing in basically and see whether it's lawful.
Can I just, Councillor Lewis?
I was just going to say, and while we're talking about this, I mean, there was that classic example of that tiny little site on Vale Road, wasn't there? Where they squeezed two dwellings on it with very, very limited access, I mean, again, that is one where we were overlooked as an example.
I must admit, it seemed like with the old court, when I read, you know, the officers' report on it, because now, you know, we don't get what the highways are paying and they haven't addressed some of our concerns, and the other one was with affordable homes, where now the, that has changed from, sorry, it's 10 and under, you don't, units, you don't have to supply affordable homes now. So that was two things which, you know, we didn't know about when we came to that decision, but still we're saying that, it's still... Councillor?
I'm just going to suggest the other, the other thing that we could do is that, as you know, I'm preparing a brief report to the Lewes District Association of Local Councilors on our concerns about the paper plans, I could also mention our concern about this and try and get some feedback from other councillors about whether they're having a similar problem.
Yes, that would be very good. Councillor Low?
Could I just answer that, if it's possible to include in the same report? We're constantly told that these, certain objections we raise, as the Cat Council Board has indicated, are not planning issues and we should stick to the planning issues, but that doesn't actually help the residents when we talk to them too much. For example, with the Newlands site, the doctors in the town have all signed a letter, or I think that, or some letter, both practices, I think, have signed a letter to say that they can't take on any more patients and yet the planning application will proceed and that could introduce another 750 souls into Seaford, all of whom at some time or another will need access to medical facility. And we're told that you can, once the houses are built and the people have moved in, you can then apply to the CCG, Criminal Commissioning Group, with respect to increasing the medical resources in the town. Well, to me, that's back to front and implied and I think there needs to be some sort of provision, okay, we can't necessarily rewrite the rules, but as somebody said, rules are forgotten to wise men and we do need to look at the rules in context. And what we're doing with these applications is looking at them in isolation and we need to look at them in context. I already mentioned this, mentioned this to Andy Smith informally, and he said there was an issue there, but he said he's not on planning, so it would go to Don Mascol, Ron Mascol, I suppose. And maybe when councillor Low has just this report, maybe the copy should go to Ron Mascol as well as Sal.
It may be also the fact that they've got, because they've lost the buckles, you know, at the end of the day, they've still got so many housing, they've got that, as well, with the same thing up north, and there's no, if we get it and that will go towards the housing code, they've got the other in the business, you know.
Quite willing to purchase it.
Yeah, we'll probably find that when councillor Low writes things up and consults with those, that they'll be the same feedback, they'll get it, they've been building on the areas, you know, so, yeah, perhaps, all right, acceptable, you know, let's do tonight accept that, but, you know, at the end of the day, they've got their guidelines, they've got to follow for right now, so it's no real situation, you know, I feel.
Guidelines can be amended.
No comment, councillor.
So, we write a formal letter to MDC, line out our concerns. I think I've been able to put your all this, put your town, all our concerns.
I know it's some way off, but, um, I, I think this matter ought to be reported to the full council.
Yes.
Which is the best way to get it, maybe, with this issue, if Councillor Loh is producing a report, then that report presumably could be circulated to the next full council.
When, when is your next meeting?
I don't think there's another one till September, but it's not really for, it's to go to Don Macbeth, who's the chair of that, because he's taking it forward in, in the interim periods, yeah.
I mean, really what, uh, the angle that Councillor Loh is doing is, is really sort of investigating other councils' concern, who might be in the same position as us, and then maybe as a body of, uh, um, town and parish councils can, you know.
I think that's what he's aiming to do.
Okay, well, maybe the way to deal with that, that chairman is to, um, mention Councillor Loh's, um, activity in your, in the letter, and say this is being investigated more broadly, not just in Seaford.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to see the draft?
Yes, also we could, we can, we can tweak it, like we need it to add anything more than, yeah. All right, uh, have you fully had your, on that?
Yeah, all, all of that.
Okay, so moving on to item six, um, to inform the committee a request of closure of South Road, uh, from junction of Broad Street to the junction of Warwick Road and East Street to facilitate the Italian market. And I think this works quite well, so, um, it says to consider any comments concerning proposal, but it seems to work fine. Councillor Lewis then?
Yeah, uh, one four, um, just say they would like a response by the first of July. It's, it's very close. And the second point I would make, does the leave, um, both affect this in any way?
Sorry?
Actually, the, um, Italian market is, um, stationed in England. Bring in the stuff up from Italy, we own a firm in Northern Italy, the stuff they sell here is brought up from Italy on trucks.
I just propose that we accept this.
Three markets.
Okay, can I have a second there? Show of hands that we, uh, okay. Thank you. Yeah, can I have another show of hands, please? I don't think everybody, yeah, unanimous. All right, concludes the meeting. Um, tonight at, uh, seven thirty-five. Thank you to everybody, thank you for coming, thank you.